All right, we're gonna stand for the flight to get our meeting started. Flight deleted suit in the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I want to let every... Okay, roll call. Councilmember Shorter?
I'm here.
Good luck. Councilmember Brecker?
I'm here.
Councilmember Dublonski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Okay, I want to, uh, we have an honor. A resident has passed the bar in our town and she's gonna get sworn in tonight here, and I'm gonna pass it to Keith Holycop to take over.
Thank you. It's a honor and privilege to always swear in new attorneys, especially when Lauren Leavitt's one of our brand-new Southwest Ranches attorneys. So it's beyond a pleasure to be able to call her up to the podium and to be able to swear. Listen, now, I get to do this because now that you're all here, I can pay the big bucks. So, okay. So Lauren, if you could please raise your right hand and hope that you have this in front of you because there's a lot to read, so I apologize now. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Florida.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Florida.
I will maintain the respect due to courts of justice and judicial officers.
I will maintain the respect due to courts of justice and judicial officers.
I will not counsel or maintain any suit or proceedings which shall appear before me to be unjust, nor any defense except such as I believe to be honestly debatable under the law of the land.
I will not counsel or maintain any suit or proceedings which shall appear to me to be unjust, nor any defense except such as I believe to be honestly debatable under the law of the land.
I will employ for the purpose of maintaining the causes confided to me such means only as are consistent with truth and honor, and will never seek to mislead the judge or jury by any artifice or false statement of fact or law.
I will employ for the purpose of maintaining the causes confided to me such means only as are consistent with truth and honor. I will never seek to mislead the judge or jury by any artifice or false statement of fact or law.
I will maintain the confidence and preserve, invalid the secrets of my clients, and will accept no compensation in connection with their business except for from them or with their knowledge and approval.
I will maintain the confidence and preserve, invalid the secrets of clients, and will accept no compensation in connection with their business except for them or with their knowledge and approval.
To opposing parties in their counsel, I pledge fairness, integrity, and civility, not only in court but also in all written and oral communications.
To opposing parties in their counsel, I pledge fairness, integrity, and civility, not only in court but also in all written and oral communications.
I will abstain from all offensive personality and advance no fact prejudicial to the honor or reputation of a party or witness unless required by the justice of the cause with which I am charged.
I will abstain from all offensive personality and advance no fact prejudicial to the honor or reputation of a party or witness unless required by the justice of the cause with which I am charged.
I will never reject from any consideration personal to myself the cause of the defenseless or oppressed, or delay anyone's cause or lucrative or malice, so help me God.
I will never reject from any consideration personal to myself the cause of the defenseless or oppressed, or delay anyone's cause or lucrative malice, so help me God.
Congratulations on joining the Florida bar.
Congratulations. We promise you don't have to stay the whole time. Lauren?
Yes.
Is there anyone here for the domestic violence awareness month?
Yeah.
Come on up if you would like. All right, we're gonna read the proclamation. Russell?
This is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2018. Whereas the residents of the Town of Southwest Ranches are this town's most precious resource, and ensuring their safety, well-being, and positive development is a priority and a responsibility that we all share. And whereas one in three women and one in four men have been victims of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime. And whereas the exposure of young children to such violence is occurring at an alarming rate, the U.S. Advisory Board on Child Abuse and Neglect suggests that domestic violence may be the single major precursor to child abuse and brutality. And whereas by providing individuals with education about how to relationships, our changing toward violence, work towards domestic violence, while the Town of Southwest Ranches is a national organization, now therefore the mayor and town council agree by proclaiming the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The Town of Southwest Ranches urge all residents to respond to and work toward ending domestic violence by supporting their community's efforts to empower and assist victims in finding and accessing the resources they need, and by promoting awareness and prevention of domestic violence in our community. Day is this 27th day of September 2018, signed by Mayor Doug McKay.
Do you have something you want to say?
Just thank you so much, the Town of Southwest Ranches, on behalf of women, staff, our board, our staff, especially the domestic violence providers that we serve. Thank you for coming.
There are order on public comment. We have two speakers tonight.
Okay.
First speaker is Noel Hollinger, followed by David Kaczynski.
Yep.
That's all we have. It's nice now.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to sign up for public comment, name. I know you did, but there's only two and there are plenty of people there.
Noel Hollinger, 199, down there. Can I talk about CAPS and the Dark Sky Ordinance? Sounds like a mystery topic. Well, mystery is that I was told that if any time that I do correct, please correct, that CAP did not know we had a Dark Sky Ordinance. Well, a little bit of research on my part, and I found two instances where they were part of performing the Dark Sky Ordinance on new construction and also rebuild. One was at West End Church here, which is a perfect example of adhering to the Dark Sky Ordinance as their sign. They got their COs, they formed the Dark Sky Ordinance. The other one is a little bit closer to home. It's called Cala Hall. And we had to come into compliance. An individual from CAP was present with a meter reading for taking, showing that a way over human, as Cala Hall was going to be. So there's two, they did know, and they should've known, overall. But my question is this, the problems that we're having right now with the Dark Sky Ordinance and several institutions in town, is how many residents did they not adhere to the Dark Sky Ordinance since the ordinance was passed back in 2004, 2005? How many? And residents have been built, and then reformed, let's say. And they did not go with the Dark Sky Ordinance at all. I wondered sometimes when I've gone to CAPs of places, tied and lit up like prison, used to be lit up, outlasted. These are private residents. I wondered how they got past, like, well, they wasn't past the Dark Sky Ordinance somehow. Anyway, I've lied and taken the reading. So I think that we have a problem with all of these COs that have been given, that have not had the Dark Sky Ordinance taken into effect. And it's not a new ordinance, it's one of the first ordinances we ever passed. So what's the big deal? The big deal is CAP doesn't know it's left-handed from its right-hand, it doesn't give a hand to the state. And I think it's time that they should rewatch and comply with our ordinances, and when they make a mistake, they should have to pay to correct the mistake. And that is my thought on this situation.
David Kaczynski, 6411 Polk Trail. Last night, Sunshine Ranch Association was announced that the Town of Southwest Ranches obtained certification from the National Wildlife Federation and the National Wildlife Act. Many more of our residents to apply, it's only 20 bucks, and fill out the form. We have to maintain that. We were also advised that the representatives from National Wildlife Federation in Washington will be coming down to give the town recognition for this. So this is a great honor for our town. Moving on, Monday, several new laws will be going into effect. One of them is called Ponce's Law, which will impose stricter animal abuse regulations on those who are convicted of animal abuse, which gives the judge discretion. Are these offenders continuing to own animals, which will stop the perpetual impact of animal abuse? Moving on from less warm and fuzzy issues, a neighbor was told last night that his wife could come to the Flowmobile today to have her driver's license with you. And I know that Flowmobile is not actually town-controlled, but when his wife came up, and she's a cancer survivor, there's a sign on the door, and she was told that she could not get her driver's license with you because she didn't have an appointment. That was not told last night.
Not true.
So it has to be some kind of, I'm sorry?
Not true.
They had some appointment.
It did not require an appointment. What happened, David, and I hate to jump in.
Go ahead.
They were so open-run with people today, in fact, council chambers were practically full. They reached a point where they were at capacity and could not serve everybody in the time they were allocated with the year. So it wasn't an appointment issue, they were just, they reached maximum capacity.
That's a first.
It is. I received a phone call, they said, "We were told last night to come," and my wife came and she was denied.
Listen, it was a first, it was the greatest I've ever seen.
Last, as everybody knows, November, we have our town ballot issue for the five-oh amendments passed the council on a 4-1 vote. I support the five-oh amendment. I believe that it could serve the rural lifestyle of the town. I've heard rulers of development being considered on Flamingo Road. I think it's all nice and lovely for those who do not live along Flamingo Road or have properties that are abutting Flamingo Road from the backside. It's nice and cheap that anybody can hide from an inland home and then make their decision if somebody lives along the backside of Flamingo Road or one of those nearby homes. I don't think you want commercial activity in your own backyard. The problem that I have is that it's going to depreciate the values of those abutting properties if there's commercial development. And then the concern is the vacant lots that may be abutting this proposed commercial activity. What is to stop these landowners that have their vacant land from coming to the councils? Well, you gave this guy next door to me, it's commercial, but you're not gonna give it to me. That's why I think it is fundamentally unfair to allow any development on Flamingo Road. Thank you.
Any additional public comments?
Two more, we have two more. We have two others here, we have Scott Smith. Step on up, please. And followed by George Martinez.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you and make this request. As some of you might be aware, Mr. Martinez is having some issues with an ingress and egress into a street on 49th Street off of 190th Avenue. We at this time request that we get some kind of accommodation on ameesment that is non-exclusive, and possibly installing a private gate that allows him ingress and egress in addition to the main gate that goes down southbound on 190th Avenue. This is a little much more than what could take place here, so if you could schedule some kind of a meeting and zoning or something like that, where we could go over some of the trouble.
I will be discussing it in public comment, I mean, in councilmember comment.
Yes. I have a lot of chatter from state, Charlotte County zoning statutes and resolutions, along with all the surveys and everything, so it's not an easy fix. This isn't something that, you know, he bought into a bad situation, and we're trying to get a remedy that he kind of put on disclosure and no due diligence, he's wound up with being even more of a problem because of this gate. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, please go further.
As far as I'd like to go, thank you for hearing me and my friend, Captain. You guys probably do know the situation that I'm in. I live it every day, and about two, three years ago, I came over here and I showed you a video of what I have to do, and I'm placed in a situation of liability all the time, and I crossed that intersection with my truck. I guess it's easy to say, change your motor vehicle, but it's very difficult when you buy a house in the ranches, and you're entitled to have trailers and everything else, not to have it at all, because someone takes the street away completely with a double yellow line.
Let me save you a little time. As I said, I'm gonna address it in councilmember comment, so you'll be hearing about it.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional public comment? Public comment is closed. At the council, board reports, any board reports?
You guys, behalf of the Judiciary Committee, and just wanted to let everyone know a couple of our events that we have going on, and also just in case there's anyone not aware, that all the fun, all the monies that come for the scholarship should come from the efforts of volunteers and donors. But none of, just coming out of the budget meeting, none of the scholars and funds come from the town's budget. It all comes from volunteers and people making donations. And just a couple of our events that are coming up there, so I don't have these dates, because we have been in conflict in October, but there's a painting parade event that will be at the barn sometime in October, which is a lot of fun, if you make a board, which, they all come out beautiful. And you can happily put that up in your home. And any other, one of our larger events is gonna be the Christmas Eve, which is gonna be January 4th. So anyone, if there's time to do it, maybe some of our college kids are home during that time, so they can participate in as well. And does anyone, we're very grateful to the Sunshine Ranches HWA who donated $1,000 last night.
Any additional board reports? Seeing none, councilmember comment, who would like to go first? Go ahead.
Okay, just real quickly, thank everybody for coming. I'm just gonna go run down some public announcements right here, and then I've just heard my colleagues. Not in any particular order, but October 20th, we have the Country Road Arts and Crafts Festival at the Equestrian Park from 10 to 4. That's a lot of fun, and it's great for stocking suppers and things of that nature with the holiday season coming up. Famous Flowmobiles will be here on 10/25, and from 10 to 2, and on November 15th from 10 to 2, so I want to mention that. And it's getting very popular, obviously. October 27th, Saturday night, Halloween at the barn, it's open to the town, put on by the Rolling Oaks Civic Association, from 6:00 p.m. on. We have costume contests, we have popcorn, we have a lot of tables put out, if you want to come and give out candy, put up a table, back to the bar, meet your neighbors, it's a lot of fun, we go around the semicircle in the barn area. If you just want to donate candy that we can pass out, we can do that too. We can get that, call Town Hall, they'll tell you the drop off for that, it'll probably be here. But we got several weeks before that, and that occurs.
What's the date of that?
27th, Saturday before Halloween. And it's a lot of fun, and you can see...
What time to what time?
6 to 11, whatever, I guess we get tired of it. And it's very enjoyable, especially with the little kids all dressed up and everything. And, you know, one of those things that you can't resist, I'm sure we're gonna have two gentlemen there dressed up as councilmen. Sorry, I couldn't resist them.
Yeah.
Broward County Property Appraiser is gonna be there, be here at Town Hall, not at Halloween, be here at Town Hall. 10/15th, October 15th, from 11 to 1:00 p.m., and 1st of November, from 2 to 4:00 p.m. And the Parks Foundation is having their car show, and their annual car show, and a chili festival, as I understand it, not a cook-off, but a festival, from 10 to 4 on the 17th of November, Saturday from 10 to 4, and you want to see some really cool wheels, that's the place to go, they've got them. And so it's a really spectacular event, and it's right there at the Rolling Oaks Park in Rolling Oaks. And that's all I have there.
Okay. Anyone else? I know you were.
I have just a couple comments. And one is about something that Noel brought up, the Dark Sky Ordinance. I am aster, had thought this for a long, long time.
The issue is the light.
It's not working.
The A system is down.
So you kind of gotta stretch your ears a little. It's been a problem for a long, long time, and I know Mecca thinks Old Street was one of the worst. You could stand at one end and you could see clearly all the way down to the other end, it was absolutely before. And that's something I'd like to see us get a little bit harder, on a little more proactive. But what stops them from going in and saying, "This is the wattage I'm using, this is the candlelight." Okay? Yeah, it's approved. But they don't have one on their property. Now they've got 60 of them. So do you combine all them to get a light amount? Because when you see these beautiful fences and they go one after another, after another, after another, and I won't mention anybody's street at this time, but it's bright, it's lit up like the high school across...
There's an item called photometric, and they have a tool for that.
I mean, it is bad, and it needs to go away. The second is, I would like to give some hats off and kudos to December Laurentano for making sure that all our events are gonna coincide with our cuttings. It's been a big deal and a big issue, and we finally seem to have managed, you know...
The lines of the eggs change, we're great.
That's exactly right. The dates change, we're in trouble, but she managed to get that done, so that when you go in for an event, you're not walking through grass this tall, it's all gonna be nice and trimmed and neat for all the school functions and then the town things that we're doing, and my hat's off to you, and thank you so much. I think that's it.
Steve?
Just a couple of things. I was gonna, just want to add on that I was at the Sunshine Ranches HWA meeting last night, and just really commend them for making that donation to the scholarship fund of $1,000.
Absolutely.
Really great. The other thing, I just will touch on briefly, the gate, I think that's, Mayor, I know you're gonna talk about it, but I'll just weigh in very quickly, I'll go in more detail, but I think you're on the right track, and I definitely...
Okay. So myself, Keith Holycop, Andy Burns, Town Engineer, and Russell all went out at 9:00, what was that, Wednesday morning? Wednesday morning, out at the gate at 3:45. The gate is built, mostly completed, but dysfunctional, to say the least. The keypad is up against the center column, so when you pull up to the gate, they're not functioning, the gates are not functioning yet, so they're not closed, but they're staying open. But if the gate's closed, you gotta pull up, get out of your car, walk over to the keypad, and punch in the keypad, and get back in your car to go through the gate. Makes absolutely no sense. They don't have a keypad on the other side, but I don't, if they put one, it's gonna create an additional problem. They actually need a loop there probably to open, or some kind of photocell to open that gate coming out of that neighborhood. And they have a section to the right... And they have a section to the right, that is the town driveway that they've been stopped for some ungodly reason, don't know why or what for. But there's some definitely serious issues that need to be resolved out there. We have the grant that we have approved for them to get money, and we've given them a portion of the money to the tune of $17,000, but there's still $20,000 that they would have a right to if they get it completed and to our satisfaction, I would say. So I would like, and if you all support, to direct Andy Burns and Keith Polycop to arrange for a meeting with the H O A here at Town Hall or whatever, and the property owner who has the issue here, to see what they can get worked out and resolved in some whatever fashion to make it amenable and work for them. It's not going to be 100% fixed, I don't think, to make you all be where you need to be. But at that meeting, unless you want to have a meeting prior to share your stuff, prior to that, that might be a good idea.
George has given me a limited power of attorney. I will submit that and then we can have the meeting on behalf of George.
Okay, so Andy, what you all might want to do is staff, meet with them first, because they have some other tools or ammo in their toolbox, so to speak. And then arrange to have a meeting with the H O A to see what you all can work out and resolve in getting this problem figured.
Okay. Can I, I just want to recap, just to make sure. You identified the issues, I don't really need to go through those. So what you'd like us to do is meet with Scott and George in advance, just to review their problems and whatever additional documentation they may have. Then you would like us to then follow up with the 345 Association to work towards a resolution that's acceptable to the council prior to.
And acceptable.
Yeah, well, you're not going to say it's okay if it's not.
Right.
Prior to us finalizing the gate and the last payment of the grant that would be due, is that, is that council consensus?
Yeah. Council on board for that?
In theory, I'm on board on that. Legal, are we on solid ground with holding off on that? Is that something we can do?
This is, sorry, Barney was.
The gate, this is the Platte 345 gate issue.
I was holding the income, that's what the question is. The 345 resolution and agreement had tremendous amounts of conditions proceeding for the town to give the money. Some of those conditions included access and accessibility for all, because the entire purpose of our agreement was to ensure that not all the traffic would be coming back to 188. And that was a huge portion of that agreement. As the mayor said, he and I went out there twice. We were out there at.
Night time.
8:30 PM with the gates open the night before, and then again 9:00 AM the next morning. The amount of traffic that is going through there now with the gates open was staggering. So if they did something to close the gate that would potentially create a situation where all that traffic would move onto 188, there would be a strict violation of the agreement. And as a result, withholding the grant revenue, a grant funding until that issue is resolved is 100% of the goal of the county block.
I think what I didn't, what I didn't address, and this is what I heard, and I don't know, but maybe with being in 345, we can answer this. But I was told they were only going to be giving out two clickers per resident. I don't know if that's true or not true, but we need to get to the bottom of that. The other thing I learned is that when those gates are activated, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to personally go out there and sit out there probably every morning for a week and count how many cars turn around because they can't get through that gate and go over and back down 188 in 164. And then what that tells us, that they're either not giving out the codes to their housekeepers, their lawn people, their pool people, their water people, whoever their service people are, to everybody's residents, they're not giving the access to get in. And they're not going to sit there at that gate. A lot of them were, I was told, saying, well, you just call and we'll let you in. Well, I don't know how that's going to work or not work. They also have video cameras up there, I don't know who's watching them or what they're on. But anyhow, you all need to get the interest of all those questions.
I think we understand. I think the direction of council is clear to work with this, so thank you.
Okay. You may also want to, I know we did a traffic count a while back, but this project stayed quite a bit longer than we anticipated. Now that it's nearing completion, maybe we may want to do a traffic count for the gate.
Exactly. That's probably not a bad idea. I would go along with, that's a great suggestion.
But they've had other issues as far as like.
No, they have, but he's referring to getting a count down before the gates are activated. Now, this is, this is a baseline right before that. Right, exactly.
On 188 and on 190, ideally.
Yeah.
On 188 and on 66, 63rd, I'm sorry, 64th.
64th.
63rd.
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 Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any additional, Keith, for good?
43.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, can I add, we're not really on that, but it's just tangential to it. Because more and more people are using that road, there is a significant change in the traffic pattern on rivers to make left-hand turns onto 190. It has, with this school year starting on and with a lot more traffic out west, it is significantly, I stop there probably every other time, maybe not quite every other time, but many times, one out of every certainly three or four times, I'm having to stop now at 190 of the way. And a lot of times you're waiting for quite a while because, like I said, there's heavy traffic coming the other direction. So we really need to follow up again with Broward County about that left-hand lane. They came as close as you can come to committing to doing it without actually saying they committed to do it. And then there was a change in management, and now it's like it never happened.
We'll re pursue that.
Thank you.
I want to add one other thing since we're on that. I got a phone call from Brian Alakad-Davy, vice mayor, and he had, F. Doc, give a phone call and telling that, you know, we have the right, if we believe it's danger, if there's danger involved related to accidents and stuff, that they have the right to just override us and put a light in anyway. They met with us here, what, a month ago or so?
Three weeks ago.
And I told them, you know, we weren't on board unless they had an exit strategy.
Why don't we tell them that we think it's a danger to our residents to have them put it in?
Why, we told them that.
I mean, look at the before and the after of what's already there. They're creating a hazard, they're not reducing one.
So here's what they said. Their comment to me was, I said, you all created more accidents than you put the light you put in. I said, they've more than doubled. I said, so, they said, yeah, but their comment to me was, but they're less serious accidents. I'm like, really? Less serious accidents? I said, I've got a council member who, they want to put the light on the northbound lane because you got in that accident and turned in that morning. So they want to, I said, listen, we have a council who's had an accident there and I'll tell you that. He's not going to tell you to put a light there, I know. I said, so, we're not in support of that. I said, you can lengthen both those lanes, there's a lot of things you can do and not put any more lights. Your theory and your pattern is to stop traffic. We have no interest in stopping traffic. We want it to continue to flow. I'll gladly lay down and park my car in front of your equipment and the police can take me away. I said, I probably got 100 people behind me to join me. Brian's collective city to join me or whatever. So anyhow, they're going to make a resolution, I'm going to go to their meeting next Wednesday, and they're going to make a resolution moving forward to show how we're not, we're all in agreement of not having this stuff. So very well be bringing back to ask for the duplicate this resolution on our behalf to say with what they're doing.
Going back to George, we definitely need to have Andy take care of this. I've been out there also myself. I'm so glad that we don't have too many gated communities because one resident is suffering due to this. And it's our job to find some cohesiveness and hopefully we can do this, George.
Okay. All right.
Russell? Did you have pictures from there?
Yes. Oh, okay. So a couple of things we've done, and a lot of people have asked, across the street from Tom, on Griffin Road where all that fill is, the town did a $1 recharge and then they donated to the 501(c)(3). So we made $60,000 and possibly more for storing fill for a year. The other thing is, a good friend of mine called me up, he owns a trucking company. He, in one of his trucks that they took back, had this horse arena in it. And he's been sitting on it, sitting on it, knew we were equestrian community. And he called me up and he said, Doug, you think you all could use a horse arena and a trailer? I said, I'm sure we could find something to do with that. I said, what do you want for it? He said, five bucks. I said, we'll take it. So I had to go to the administrator to get approval of accepting it. But we were given this arena, you'll look, we have the pictures there, and a, not the tractor, but a trailer that it's stored in. And so we have that in our possession and can use it however we see fit. So we've been fortunate to have some people step up and donate and give us some stuff and make a little money from the talent and help out. So just wanted to share that with you all, let everybody know that we're doing the best we can and get what we can for as little as we can.
We need to get a hold of a refrigeration company because we could fill it with water and freeze it, then we could have a whole lot of hot food.
Okay. Thank you, Russell, appreciate it. So anyhow, but those are seats, obviously, those orange pieces actually hold the arena sections together, and that's where you kind of sit and just stand around it. I think it's like 100 feet by.
55 by 110.
55 by 110, it's the size of it. So, but it is portable, you can move it around. I'm sure it's a lot of work, I haven't done it, don't intend to do it. But we have it in our possession, so if somebody can think of a use or a good idea, we need it or want to use it somewhere, it's at our disposal. I haven't set it up, so I can't tell you how long it takes, but I would guess three or four hours. I'm sure. And December's happy as can be. So, all right. Legal coverage, you're up to bat.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm just so happy you told us what those orange things were because Russell told me they were car buffers. So now I know what those are, so thank you. Again, it was a pleasure meeting this gentleman and his wife the night before. I think we've come up with potential solutions that can really resolve this issue and hopefully we'll be able to implement them with your H O A and give you the relief that you're looking for, which I know is never the intended now. October 11th, October 11th will be the first reading of the Retail Nursery and Commercial Landscape Operation Ordinance. I know this is a very important topic to a lot of our residents, so throwing it out there on television or otherwise, for anyone who's interested, come to that first reading on October 11th. Other than that, no further major legal issues.
Wow. When might we be headed to court?
On which matter?
On Pines' matter.
First quarter next year, I hope.
Noel?
Correction. On what you just said. What the Congress put in place was that the corrections were to be made and they returned to the board for final review before it was being sent to the.
The council has decided to take it up instead of sending it back in their prerogative to use it.
Okay. Are they willing to take questions? Because I got a bunch.
October 11th.
Unlimited time.
It'd be a problem.
Unlimited time.
The meeting itself. Hey, just bring your sleeping bag and pillows, we'll be good. Okay. Andy, you're up to bat.
Hey, Mayor, just a few things, very briefly, just want to let you all know that October 9th and October 10th, we're going to be hosting Florida Department of Agriculture, they're going to be running a couple of classes here in council chambers. One is a Train the Trainer EPA-approved certification class. The other is a Worker Handler Pesticide Safety Training. I've got some flyers on that that I'm going to pass down in a moment, so you guys can take what you need. If there's anybody that you think may need to be made aware of that, certainly be aware of that. The second thing is, there was a lot of discussion a couple of weeks ago about waste control. I just want to let you all know, you've all seen it, but certainly let the public know that we have put waste control on notice and penalties will be enforced. So we're moving forward with that. We also reminded them of the commitment they made to modify the buckets on the bulk trucks, which they acknowledged and. Just want to make your word of those things. And last but not least, I wanted to take a moment and enlighten of passing the budget from the military earlier, and I wanted to talk to you for a moment about Marty. If I may.
No.
Excuse me, Mr. Sherwood. So, you know, Marty and I are charter officers, we've been here within three weeks of each other, working together. And certainly we come in here and we are a unified team in doing the best we can and working together for certainly the council, for the residents, for the town, and for the staff. It's pretty in here, it's not always pretty before we get in here. Marty and I have been on the fly heads and disagree with issues. He is opinionated, he tells me when he thinks I'm wrong. Frequently, he's right, but he does that. So I just wanted to take a moment and just thank him personally for the things that he does to keep this town out of trouble, to keep things going in the right direction. I've worked with a lot of people in my professional career, I've worked with a lot of finance people. I've never worked with somebody that has depth of knowledge is what his is. And so I just wanted to publicly thank him and just pass that along, so thank you. I have no, that's all I have.
And Marty, you get to find it.
All right. Number nine, resolution.
A resolution of the town council of the town of South Lake, Texas, Florida, respectfully requesting the Broward County Legislature to get, to adopt the local bill to prevent a municipality in Broward County from attempting to annex lands located within another municipality without that municipality's consent, and for purchasing lands located within another municipality without that municipality's consent. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to submit a local bill, providing an effective.
Mayor, if I will.
Go right ahead.
For those of you who are at the budget hearing, apparently Lori Parish was the only person in the audience who didn't know that Pines tried to deannex the town, or a portion of it.
105 acres.
Last year. And but for legal, finding out through the grapevine that they were attempting to do this undercover and throwing it on an agenda without any notice to anyone, I can absolutely guarantee you that that bill would have been approved, okay? 100%, listened to it, it was going for approval. Fortunately, the town has a very good friend in Senator Farmer, who believes in the protection of our municipality and municipal rights. And as a result of that, Senator Farmer has agreed to work with me, and the language may change a little bit, but to sponsor a bill before the Florida Legislature to prevent a municipality from deannexing another municipality without their consent, or buying up property within a neighboring municipality without that municipality's consent. Do I think 100% that this will pass? No. Do I think it will block Pines's efforts to deannex again? Absolutely. So it is with pleasure that I present this item to the council and to debate it and hear from the public.
Your motion?
I can motion to approve.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
Sure, I'll make some comment. It was just unbelievable what they tried to do and we need to credit Keith for stopping them because had they achieved their goal, we would have lost a big chunk of our tax base out west. I have a question, what about the property, are they trying to do a secret there or?
No. They, I'll let you finish on and then I'll add more. I'm happy. You have any more questions or?
Well, just.
Okay. Just the prison property. As it relates to the CCA property, because it's owned by the town, it was not part of their attempt at deannexation. But you all may remember that the town owns the CCA property solely because Pines tried to buy it and then thereafter would attempt to deannex it. Pines did the same thing for the industrial site directly adjacent to the CCA. Pines did the same thing for the industrial site directly adjacent to the CCA site. Now it's industrial, it used to be the women's prison. They went ahead and inquired it, they then de-annexed it from Broward County and then they sold it. You know, which is their MO that they've done all throughout that western hemisphere where you see it being cherry picked and no longer having the straight line of being the town.
So no additional comments up here, right? Okay? No, we're good, okay. All right.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Councilmember Dublonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, this is Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, approval of minutes. September 12th. Regular meeting and special meetings, September 12th. So A and B, motion to approve.
A second.
Any public comment on this one? We've been corrected before. So you go public comment, public comment is closed. Call for question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Councilmember Dublonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, this is Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.